I wanted to thank Sergeant Dunn of the police here because he recently confirmed what I had sort of understood, that domestic violence is a very real issue here in Reinbeck. And I'm still working on trying to get the county convinced to expand the domestic response team to cover the village of Reinbeck. A year and a half ago, the Citizens Advisory Committee on Domestic Violence for Dutch County had recommended that, you know, have an embedded dark officer here and in Wapoeger. And I haven't had it yet, but I'm keeping the dream alive, so to speak. You probably know about this, but just in case you don't, this Saturday at 11:00 in the morning at Upstate Films, John Bauer, Master, and Cena Hudson co-sponsoring a film about the river. But the new part of it is the simulated 3D video of what those fractures, the proliferation of them would look like. So there's that. I still am sort of obsessed with this notion of trying to get an expanded, updated version of the lowest report from the Northern Dutchess Alliance from 2008, just looking at plugging the leaps, where are we spending our money where it's leaving Reinbeck, it's leaving Dutchess County? What local businesses could we help expand or start? And there was a pretty scientific report done, it's right on the Northern Dutchess Alliance website, I'm just still frustrated. It would take maybe about $20,000 to do that, and then the county budget of $478 million, I think it'd be a good idea to do that, not just to update it for Northern Dutchess, but for the whole county. I came up with this idea, and I'm asking, sort of running up the flag and sort of bouncing it off of you guys. There are restaurants, you know, like Terrapin in Reinbeck and others, I'm sure, that get a lot of their food from, you know, local farmers here in Dutchess County. What I was thinking is, wouldn't it be neat if the county had, I know there's a farm-to-table program, but wouldn't it be neat if tourists or just people who live here locally could walk up and down the street and could see right in the window, sort of a Dutchess farm-to-table seal of approval, whatever, that a restaurant would only get if they, you know, could prove that whatever we decided, 10%, 30%, 60% of their food is coming from local farms. It's just an idea, I've learned something, but if I keep my ideas to myself, they're never gonna happen, so I'm sharing them with you, I've already shared it with some other folks. The, just north of us, in Columbia County, they do hand-counted paper ballots. You don't have to wonder if a computer is counting your votes accurately, I'm just putting that out there, this November and this March, of course, there are elections. And I just ask you to, the Democratic and Republican Elections Commissioner in Columbia County, they've been together on this for the last six or seven years, and they actually do the printing of the ballots in-house, and it saves money. It would not cost, I think I extrapolated, it would cost maybe 50, 60 grand extra on the county level to do that. And they do it in Columbia County, you don't have to trust the computers, they actually do the hand-counting. I just wanted to put that out there. Again, a lot of people are struggling in Reinbeck and Northern Dutchess with access to broadband. If you go to muninetworks.org, even just across the border in Western Massachusetts, there's a bunch of towns that pull together, Wired West, I believe, and I would like to see something like that happen here. There's never gonna be enough revenue shared from the state with the village of Reinbeck or town of Reinbeck or Clinton or Dutchess County if, basically, the millionaire's tax is set to sunset at the end of this year. And if you think you're not getting enough money from the state government as far as being shared with the village of Reinbeck now, God only knows what's gonna happen when, basically, a $4 billion hole is blown in the state budget when the millionaire's tax goes away. So I just thought I'd put that out there. If you want more info on it, it's fiscalpolicy.org. The state budget is done boom, 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 very quickly, it's gonna be done in a few months, so I'd urge you to get involved, check out fiscalpolicy.org. You can call the governor, call state legislators at 877-255-9417. Check out today's Poughkeepsie Journal, I was flabbergasted, it wasn't just some Democrats, three Republicans in the county legislature walked up to Caroline Fenner after she gave a speech, she's, you know, new to the areas, from Hyde Park, Arlington, gave a speech at the county legislature a week ago talking about, we need to, you know, end pay-to-play. And it wasn't just Democrats, Republican county legislator came up to her. So, I've been working on this issue for 20 years, I have more hope than I have ever had that we might be able to get a law passed in Dutchess County like what they're pushing for in Ulster, and they've already passed in Orange County and Rockland County. The only other thing I would say is, this letter that I circulated, I did not get 24 other county legislators to sign onto it, but I did get two other members of my own caucus at least to sign onto it. And if you're wondering, you know, where I stand as far as why does Joel still think that we could safely lower the jail population, I'm gonna do everybody a favor, I'm not gonna list all these 25 bullet points, but if you look under stronger, safer, healthier, kinder, the county executive sort of watchwords, goals, there are a lot of ways that we could and should be making Dutchess County safer and safely lowering jail population. You know, the last thing I would just say is that I've signed on to something, I'm asking you guys to consider it, and there are a number of leaders of faith in Northern Dutchess County who are involved, it's called the Matthew 25 pledge, you know, when I was hungry, you know, you give me something to eat, thirsty, something to drink, stranger invited in, welcomed, et cetera. And it's just basically referencing the, you know, the undocumented immigrants now threatened with mass deportation, African-Americans threatened by too much racial profiling, and the Muslims, you have the registry and the possible ban. I bring that up because if we're not talking about this stuff at a local level, it's never gonna be sent up the way. So, it's Sojourner's Magazine, it's Reverend Jim Wallace, it's called the Matthew 25 pledge. And that was long, thank you very much, I stand at 876-2488 if you have any questions, comments, concerns, complaints, ideas. Thanks, Joel.
I want you to do the treasurer's report.
Okay, treasurer's report for the village of Reinbeck, this is for the period ending December 31st. The tax and general fund ended the month with $1,292,813.95. The water fund ended the period with $595,935.11. The sewer fund ended the month with $684,690.49. Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total $86,283.15. In the water fund, $19,078.73. And in the sewer fund, $20,009.23.60. Also, bills from the escrow account total $7,290.80. The operating statement is provided for the expenses through the period ending January 10th, 2017. The adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the Water and Sewer Department liaisons and are presented for authorization. The Budget 2017-18, department heads will receive budget review and requests tomorrow, January 11th, to begin the budget process. I have four budget amendments that I'm asking the board to authorize. One is for an increase in the expense account, $83,404.12, that's in the water fund, and also the revenue account, $39,91.12, also in the water fund, that is $12,750, and that's to account for the Hudson River estuary grant. Also, the $7,000 to move engineered budget to the West Market Street drainage line item from 1440.04 to 5110.04, in the amount of $7,000. Also, to covered overage from 3120.01, police part-time, to 3120.01.20, for police clerk, in the amount of $2,000.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendments as submitted.
Second.
Discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion, excuse me, I make a motion to approve the water adjustments as noted by the treasurer.
Second, discussion, all's in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the sewer department adjustments as presented by the treasurer.
Second, discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Karen, appreciate it. For the police department, for the month, there were 32 incidents in the town, 108 in the village, total of 11 tickets in the town and 180 in the village, total of five arrests and eight accidents. Brief report on center cause, there were six cars that were towed and 23 parking tickets were issued, and so far this year, there have been 69 snow-remains tickets issued. So, public service announcement, if it's snow, it's get your cars off the road, please, so you won't get towed, and our car drivers can clear the roads for safe travel. Fire?
The fire department reports for the month of December 2016, there were a total of 86 alarms for the fire department, 19 fire calls, nine in the town, eight in the village, and two mutual aid calls to Redmond. There were 59 EMS calls, 23 in the town, 29 in the village, five mutual aid calls to Hillside, one mutual aid called to Reinkliff, and one mutual aid called to Statsburg. There were also eight motor vehicle accidents, six were in the town, two were in the village. Ambulances did not respond to nine calls, therefore, the response percentage was 86.56%. The 2017 officers have met for their reorganizational meeting, and there are three members starting their firefighter-one class, and there are two members who will be beginning their EMT class. Respectfully submitted, Kylie Lee, Fire Department Chief, Percy Mayne, EMS Captain.
Thank you. You got anything for the zoning report?
No.
We have not reported yet. Oh, there's some.
Lots here.
How about the zoning commission, is that meeting set?
The zoning commission is meeting tomorrow at 6:30.
Okay. So that'll be the review of all the comments that were submitted from the public during and since our public hearing on the proposed zoning changes.
Just a review of everything that was submitted, comments that were made, and just the general discussion.
Exactly. So we are working on it, continuing to take comments, and the commission will be reviewing tomorrow. Moving on to the highway department, has anyone heard from the trustee box? Nobody? I know I've extended the invitation, if she would be unable to make it, that I would address any concerns she had or present her report, but I also have heard nothing from her, so we have an empty seat.
I'll read her report. I was like, your report is John 74.
Yeah.
Can I read it, 'cause I used to read it?
Sure.
Okay, here we go. Jobs completed for the month of December 2016, the brush and leaf was picked up on the north side and the south side. Mulch was delivered. Mechanical work was done on all the equipment, servicing the trucks was done for the winter. Road prep was done for blacktop repairs and blacktop areas locations throughout the village. Snow plowing and bulk snow removal was done, and they also have sinterclaws here. There's a request to get rid of some surplus items, there's an ADA ramp, aluminum ramp, that was actually out here when we had the temporary police headquarters. There's a down Easter sander, and there's a 2010 Chevy pickup truck, but that's from the wood.
That's the one, right. And it's not really on the surplus list as we've talked yet.
Right. You're gonna address that in your.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Then it says bid to remove piles of wood behind the garage, I don't know what that means.
There's a, two significant piles of wood that were, had been placed out there after removals in the village, so we're looking to get rid of it.
That was from the Central Hudson Trees?
Yep. So the idea was to see if anybody would want to purchase it in bulk and remove it?
Has that been advertised?
No. Do you have any equipment that you want?
I did, and I gave that list to John.
Okay.
And John has all that, I circulated that. There were several pumps, et cetera, equipment on that list, I gave it to John.
Okay. Was there anything from wastewater?
No.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to put the aluminum ramp, the sander, and the pumps identified.
The water department.
The water department. Out for bid?
Second.
It's a house.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the aluminum ramp has a minimum bid, it's obviously got scrap value, right?
Right, yeah, we would, we don't have to accept a bid if it's not, I know, so we can place.
Can we have John just have, compute what it might be, typically in the scrap yard, and just have that be the minimum?
Right, above the, minimum above the scrap value.
Makes sense.
Yep.
And will John get me the list of?
Yes. If John or Tom should have it, somebody.
Yeah, I'll make sure you get, I'll make sure you get that list.
Okay. All's in favor?
Aye.
So you'll have, we've done it, we'll get the list and publish it. Do we wanna do the same with the firewood? Publish it, see if we can come up with.
How much wood's there? Three mounds? Is it worth, I mean, is it worthwhile?
Probably is.
There's a fair amount. It's too much for our guys to process and.
Oh, but that's fair enough.
Yeah.
So we'll take that one. How many trees did we take then? 29?
Well, I mean, is this, buyer take all, or is it?
Yeah.
Somebody can come in and say they want a pickup loaded, take it from fire.
Yeah, we need to get rid of it. It's log leaf.
Oh, it's log leaf.
Right?
I thought it was cut up.
It's not all cut up, some of them are pretty long.
I'll make a motion to put that bid back together. Second, discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, this is the summer report for the water department. For the treated water for the month of December, it was $13,340,000 gallons. Just for point of reference for the year, this is just treated water, not processed water, giving of all processes, backwash. There's $153,62,034 gallons of water treated dispersed out into our distribution system for the year of 2016. We briefly just mentioned a Chevy Colorado, I'd like to bring that up for discussion again. We received three estimates that we talked about in the month of October for care, just a reminder, the Chevy Colorado, it's a 2010, approximately 7,000 miles on it, it has a blown engine. And so the issue would be of what do we do, how to replace it. We had received bids, the lowest bid, or the bid that was the best value, was from Trebles, and that was for $6,792.22, and that was in October. There's been an update to that because our superintendent of public works took the truck, had the truck towed to Trebles again, and I worked with them again in last week and this week to get a status on that. And so it's not in this report, 'cause I just got the data yesterday after the report was submitted, the price has gone up on a replacement engine, from $6,792.22 to now And that includes the $75 that we paid, just paid to have it towed, and also includes $600, which is the core fee. So the core, as everybody knows, means the engine block gets returned back to GM, and if they think the core is good, they give you a $600 credit back, but you gotta pay the $600 in advance, but if the core is good, we could possibly get $600 back. But anyways, to replace the engine right now versus $6,792, you know, is the new price from Trebles, there's been no other estimates made on getting the engine to see if that price has gone up from any other vendors that we circulated before. The, just to put this all in reference, it has a trade-in value if it was good and working, and the trade-in value if it was good and working, and this is from the internet kind of blue book, is between $5,500 and $7,000. It has a purchase value, if you could purchase one new at a dealer, between $9,000 and $11,000. Third-party purchase, just for reference, would be $7,600. And we also went out and got state bids, and we had a Nissan Frontier crew cab, which was the only thing that came that was applicable, the rest was like a Chevy Silverado and a Ford, one Ford, a bigger Ford, I forget the list, but the Nissan Frontier was a little over $22,000 at the time. So, it's kind of where we're at. I talked to Tom, our water plant, he would like to see that truck repaired because in terms of, the truck's in good shape, body-wise, everything else, in terms of working, having a working vehicle, it was a good truck to have for the water department because it's primarily used for two things. One, it's an easy truck to get around the village and do water meter readings with, you know, in terms of parking and putting in place. It's also a good service truck, as we do water meter replacements, and we can load it up very, they can load up very quickly and go do water meter replacements, where the other two trucks are bigger, bulkier, and more difficult to do, and it's also used for ARs. So, a small truck is a useful vehicle for the water department of some nature. I talked to Trebles more in depth, you know, in terms of, since they're in the business, I asked him, what's your opinion of this truck, right, just point blank? And they were right on the line, you can or you cannot, it's that close, right? His rule of thumb is, if you repair the truck and you can sell it for more than what the repair costs were, he'd repair it. So the question can be, is the value of the truck worth $7,645 to get it repaired versus buying new at $23,000? My recommendation, and Tom's recommendation for the water department is, we'd like to see this truck repaired, 'cause it was a good truck. And the new engine will get it back to what we had and what we were working with, and hopefully a reliable vehicle. So I'm open for discussion.
How many miles around it?
Around 70.
Good shape, rust anyways.
Yeah, that's what I just said, the body is in good shape, the cab's in good shape, the bed's in good shape, overall, the truck is in good condition. I'd like to make a motion, if that's it, there's no other discussion on what, on the value of the truck, I'd like to make a motion that we go forward with the $7,645 to Trebles to get the truck repaired, the engine replaced.
But isn't that, isn't that now more than Ruby's?
But as I mentioned, I don't know if Ruby's price has gone up, because this is now the current price coming from GM. Ruby's price from GM was also a new GM engine, and they were all about the same before, so I'm gonna assume that now the current price is the current price, and no matter where I go, since they were all before were the same, they're gonna be the same again this time. So, yes, can I go back out to Ruby's and say, is there, but as of Monday, I haven't had time to research this and get it again, 'cause it was late Monday until.
$1,000 is a big difference in a truck that.
It is.
We're investing the same amount of money that it's worth.
It went up a thousand bucks, and that's why I said it's 50/50, it's on the line.
Was that core price included before? 'Cause I don't remember hearing that before, the $600.
I didn't hear that before either, but I'm gonna make the assumption that it was, because it came from the same vendors.
All right. I mean, I would suggest an amendment to the motion that establishes a maximum of that money and pending, you know, going back to the two other vendors to see if they can beat the price of valor.
We can definitely go back to the other two vendors, it may require taking the truck back to them, and so additional.
Well, nothing's changed.
No, nothing's changed.
They should be all provided estimate.
But we had it for, you know, somebody requested it be towed back to the center.
Right.
And that's where it's currently sitting, that vendor.
Okay.
If the numbers are that close, I mean, is it the opinion of this board to invest that kind of money in that truck? That's really what.
That's exactly what I meant.
That's what the motion's on the table.
Yeah, I mean, they're all relatively close in price, it's between $6,500 and $7,500. Do we wanna invest that money in a truck that's worth $6,500, $7,500?
Well, you got a three-year warranty on the.
A three-year warranty on the new engine. Where before, the other vendor was only a two-year warranty, which was different, and it was supposedly a new engine as well. We had a price for a used engine as well as a new engine, you know, and I didn't wanna go, we had, we had talked about the used engine and said, you know, that, that only came with a 90-day warranty and was $6,000, so.
Right.
We said that's not useful.
As it is, the engine that's in only lasted 70,000 miles, so why would we invest in something that had anything close to that, if they're probably notorious for dying in 70,000 miles?
I've asked that question to the vendors, I said, these trucks have problems, and the answer was no, right? So, I don't know if there's a record.
What's wrong with this one specifically?
I don't know specifically, when I asked the question, they said, the engine is rattling and is definitely shot, that's the technical description that I got. So unless you wanna pay to tear the engine apart, they couldn't give me a description.
Well, we've had three vendors tell us that engine's shot.
Exactly. So, is this gonna have to be on the table for another month, do we get invested, do we get close?
No, I mean, we have the motion on the table.
And it's been led into the actual $76.
$76, so we can go forward if none of the other vendors.
Then it gets awarded to the lowest of those three.
Yes. The lowest and best warranty.
I'll give it a second. You know, we get $2,500 a year for the next three years, at the very, at the very least. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I think you've all saw the email that went out, David Pearson was in and did the Department of Health inspection of the plant itself, it's rather long, so I'm not gonna read it, there are some recommendations that came out of it in terms of, in general, get the tank inspected, replace the ladder, which we did, we did the video on a year ago, and knew that the ladder was replaced, needed to be replaced. But other than that, there was no other major issues associated, nothing said that we had that were in violation of anything.
Chemical injectors.
Some labeling issues, yes. So the three-page report, submit to the board for keep on file, from the Department of Health or our water department.
Yeah, the original's on file.
Yeah, you have that back, okay, good. We ended the year, a lot of work, right? Right at the very end of the year, we had several water breakages that happened. We had a leak at 42 Valley Way Road in Reinkliff, which was repaired. We also had a water main break near Hog Bridge, which had to be fixed. Well, Valley Way Road was on 1226, Hog Bridge was on 1228, and then on the 30th, we had a fire hydrant that got, was damaged and caused a breakage down on Michael Road. So, the 26th, 28th, and the 30th kept the water department very busy doing a lot of repairs. We are down to having one hydrant left, so Tom was getting the placement of getting more hydrants put on order so that we have a surplus there. No updates to Highway Road Reservoir, and on the water improvement project, still no word from DOT, we're hoping any day now, which is the word we're getting, that it should be coming out, should be coming out, so hopefully we should have that soon, and engineers have scheduled a meeting to start going over the specifics and talking about that with the water department. That's it for the water department report, any questions? Wastewater?
Okay, wastewater, amount treated was 3.9 million gallons. Gallons of sludge processed was 44,300 gallons, and pounds of sludge processed was 6,388 pounds. They performed the bi-yearly cleaning of all lift stations, and they had a pump that was clogged, the village's green number two pump was clogged, and I have the invoice here, there were some rags that got stuck in there, that's been, that's been fixed. And that's, that's it for the wastewater department.
The headworks department, how is all operating well?
Oh, yeah. And that was completed three or four months ago.
No, I know, but it's in, it's operation of it all.
Yeah, yeah. Basically covering the area where the influent comes in to the main plant, so now it's covered and it's protected. You know, the one thing we have to look at is, when was it completed? We have the specific date, but it was, we got our certificate of compliance.
Maybe October.
In October, so we just have to make sure, put that on your radar for warranty, so everything, you get a one-year warranty on a lot of the building materials and working ship, so that prior to that expiry, we do a, maybe just a walk-around, just make sure everything is still.
Good idea, I'll mention that to Pete. Good work. Okay. Tree committee, don't believe we have a report, and we do not have our liaison. We have some requests, but I don't know that they've been seen by the tree commission yet. Looks like they haven't been.
I thought this first one, no, the one for pruning at 6459, just seems like we've talked about that one before. Was that in last month's?
It was, it was one of the trees that we had planted, it was in the driveway.
Yeah, I thought we had brought this up and talked about it.
There's a letter that's behind this.
Talking about two separate things.
Yeah, this one's dated, this one's 2014, so I don't know what.
462614.
She, she copied that as well as her letter, though she had requested that with the pruning project, since she referenced it in her letter.
So it's a new, it's a new request?
Yeah, because the letter.
As of 1227.
Correct.
So the tree commission is going to need to look at it. I don't know, so I think we'll have to pass on those.
Yeah.
Anything from, I have nothing for parks and recreation, anything for paralyzed?
No.
Okay. So we have a request, building use request from the Reinkliff Republican Committee for January 28th from 10 to 12 here in the village hall. So I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm not sure, they might want to change that to the 30, 31st, what's the last?
31st is the last.
31st. Well, we can, can approve this, this day.
Approve what?
We can approve the 28th and then change it again.
If they, if they want.
We won't have another meeting.
Have we heard from?
No, they're having a meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
They will amend its approval, if they want to amend.
If they want to amend the date, then we'll.
Vote via email.
Okay. Yeah, we'd have to check the date to see that it was clear here, the building. Okay. Was there a second?
I didn't.
Okay.
Any, any more discussion?
No.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is this application only from the, oh, yes it is. You have some resolutions for us, Pat?
I do.
Okay. So the first one is, and Rich put this one together, right?
Correct.
So apparently the county is requiring that we have a machine inspector on site for the election, and there are no machine inspectors that reside in the village of Reinkliff, so we have to pass a resolution authorizing a non-village resident to serve as a village election inspector. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution as submitted.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
I think we found somebody in Pleasant Valley, right, Pat?
Yes.
And then, the next resolution is establishing the, is this the inspector, we have to approve them too?
Yes.
Okay. So we have to, I'll make a motion to approve the poll workers, the list that has been generated by our election official, the board. Second. Any discussion on that? I do have a question, Pat.
Yes.
So we have, so you're able to find, there has to be two machines, oh, just one certified voting machine technician, I see.
That's his.
I got it, okay.
But, that question, so we approved it for being out of the village, but yet this is, this is Reinkliff.
This is different.
Is it different?
These are inspectors, if you look on the fourth one, is, is, he's from Pleasant Valley.
Only one of them has to be a certified machine technician.
Gotcha.
That's all it is.
Oh. Now, the inspector is not only one of them, but the technician.
This technician.
Mike, there has been one from each department, there's the alternative.
Got it.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All's in favor?
Aye.
So we have, didn't we do the resolution for the election already?
You had for the election, and that there was not a polling place, but you did not have the terms.
Okay, so we have a resolution for the election, which will be held on Tuesday, March 21st of this year. The offices to be filled.
Oh, there's a date.
Yeah, the date's on there, but the offices to be filled are mayor for a two-year term beginning on the first Monday in April of 2017 through noon of the first Monday in April 2019, and two trustees with the same terms. There is a village justice position, a four-year term, starting on the first Monday in April 2017 through noon of the first Monday of April 2021. And this resolution would direct the village clerk, correct that there too, Pat, the village clerk to publish the resolution in a kitchen job. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything we need to be doing with this history, historical society stuff? It's just a annual report?
That's in there for your information.
Okay. Gotcha. You need a resolution for the green line? What does this one do, Pat?
Date.
I guess my question, do we have to do it right now? We have time.
I sent it to the county.
Does we have to do an environmental assessment on it?
Yes. I had sent it to Rich, but I.
All right, well, let's table this one pending.
Which is.
Rich spots for it, Rich, yeah. We already took care of the surplus equipment, and we'll report minutes. Anybody have any comments on the minutes from 12/8 or 12/13 of 2016? No? No. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted, the emails to the trustees. Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Anybody got anything else? They've just set a village of Reinkliff record. Nothing? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.